We'd like to welcome everyone to the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners meeting. We'll call it to order and tonight Commissioner Turner will lead us in prayer and then that will be followed by Commissioner Farley with a pledge to the flag.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you again for a wonderful day today, Lord, and thank you for the New Year's blessings that you've given each one of us, Lord. And as we begin the new year, we think about the Roger Allen family, Lord, and some of the difficulties that they're going to be facing here, Lord, in the next few days. And we are thankful for his service, Lord, to the community and the lives and the families that he's impacted with his service and with the way that he lived his life, Lord. I just ask that you surround his family tonight, Lord, put your arms around them, let them know how much that we care about them, Lord, and that we're thankful for the way that he's served our community so faithfully over these years. Ask that you be with each one of us represented here tonight, Lord. The decisions that they're going to make help us to be clear with our thoughts and our minds, Lord, and our emotions and actions, that they'll be pleasing to you. My ask is in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, in the God of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Farley.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Coggan.
Present.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serrino. 21 present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have a copy before, I believe, of the minutes of the last meeting. Commissioner Phillips?
Mr. Mayor, I reviewed those minutes, find them in order, and move that they be approved.
A second from Commissioner Turner. Anyone have any additions or corrections that they noted? If not all of you in favor of that, then please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. First, we have a resolution of sympathy for a special person, Mr. Stephen Walker. And Commissioner Tiffany Phillips will make that presentation and she will be joined by Commissioner Young.
Commissioner Young and I both are presenting this because Chief Walker lived in his district as well as the fire department that he served was in my district. So while the family's coming up, I'd like to say a couple of words. Chief Walker was instrumental in the Fosterville Midland Fire Department in the reconstruction that we had, or reorganization, excuse me, that we had back in 2008 due to some financial issues. And so he and his family were wonderful in that, and they've really helped to create the fire department that we have today. So we would just like to say thank you to Lakita and the family for that service that they have provided. Whereas it was with great sadness that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of Stephen Q. Walker, chief of the Fosterville Midland Fire Department and friend of many, and whereas Chief Walker is survived by his wife Lakita Henderson Walker and children Thomas, Jessica, John Luke, and Timothy, and whereas Chief Walker was the owner of Walker's AA Automotive Towing and Repair, served in the United States Navy, and was a veteran of the Gulf War, and whereas he enjoyed working at the Fosterville Midland Fire Department and twice won the firefighter of the year award, whereas we know that his passing has caused great sadness to his family and friends, now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on the 17th day of January 2013 does hereby extend sincere sympathy to the family of Chief Stephen Q. Walker and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of sympathy be forwarded to the family of Chief Walker by the clerk of this legislative body. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second by Commissioner Young. All of you in favor of that, please say aye. Aye. That is certainly unanimous, and we all express our sympathy to the family and our thanks to the family for allowing Mr. Walker to serve as our chief and to serve as leader of so many important things that have happened within our community. We just really appreciate that. Do any of you want to say anything? Okay. Well, we do appreciate it, and we know you're grieving over this, but you have a lot to be thankful for. He's left a tremendous legacy for all of us to try to emulate. Thank you very, very much. Okay, next, we're going to call on Commissioner Baum for a resolution of recognition for a young lady that was one of our cross-country state champions. Mr. Baum.
Thank you. And I'd like to invite Coach Young and Nicole Gardner up here to the podium with me. While they're coming up, I'll provide a brief introduction. You may remember that we honored two runners several months ago, Brock Baker, from Oakland, and Rebecca Browning from Eagleville. They were track and field stars. Today, we're going to honor Nicole Gardner, who's a cross-country runner. Track and field is a spring sport, and cross-country is a fall sport, and so that's why we're doing them at separate times. I should add that all of this inspires me to try running cross-country, but I'm going to start with a small country. Whereas Siegel High School sophomore Nicole Gardner recently captured the class AAA state championship in cross-country with a time of 18 minutes and 44 seconds at Percy Warner Park's steeplechase course, and whereas Nicole finished second last year but won this year by 13.84 seconds over Caneridge sophomore Bailey Dean, and whereas her victory is a result of her dedication and commitment to practice and exercise, and we commend her for a job well done, now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to Nicole Gardner and congratulate her on winning the class AAA state championship title in cross-country and wish her much success in all her future endeavors. Resolve this 17th day of January 2013. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
And a second from Commissioner P. and others. All in favor of that, please say aye. Aye. That is unanimous, I'm sure. Thank you very much. Congratulations, young lady, and we appreciate it. Congratulations. Next, we're going to recognize Commissioner Jeff Phillips, and he's going to present a resolution of recognition to some of our officials from MTSU on MTSU True Blue Week. And we'd ask for those of you that are representing MTSU to come on up here with him.
I'd like to welcome up Diane Turnham. Diane is the senior women's administrator at MTSU, senior. That's pretty cool.
Old.
And Colby Sherlock. Colby is the student president over at MTSU. And then Marco Colby. Marco's with the athletic department, and I can't remember what Marco does, but I'm sure it's really big because he is.
(laughing).
Resolution of recognition, MTSU True Blue Week. Whereas I Am True Blue began at Middle Tennessee State University as an affirmation of the best ideals shared by the blue writer community, and whereas it signals their values, commitment to student success, and devotion to the institution, and calls upon all of us to be valuable contributors to the process of MTSU, and whereas MTSU has named the week of January 21 through 27, 2013, to be True Blue Week, and whereas during that week, the MTSU men's basketball team coached by Kermit Davis will host Western Kentucky University. What do you think, Jeff?
(laughing).
On January 26, and will be aired on ESPN2, and the MTSU women's basketball team coached by Rick Ensall will host Western Kentucky University on January 27. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to Middle Tennessee State University to recognize I Am True Blue Week in Rutherford County and encourage all residents and businesses to wear blue all week and show their true blue spirit. Fly their car flags, hang their MTSU flags outside their homes all week, and put a message on their business marquee to remind people about the basketball games held that week. Attend the games and invite a friend, relative, or neighbor to attend with you. Resolve this 17th day of January 2013. I move for approval. Mr. [inaudible].
Second by Commissioner Jeff Jordan and others. All in favor of that, please say aye. Aye. Thank you very much. We appreciate your presence, and we appreciate what MTSU is doing for this great community. Thank you very much. And we're going to have a few words from Ms. Turnham. All right.
Well, first of all, we'd just like to thank all of you for presenting this resolution, and we are very excited about True Blue Week. Anytime you play Western Kentucky, you want to make sure we get all the red out and have all the blue come in. We view ourselves in athletics as certainly the front porch of the university, but certainly also the front porch of our community. So we want all of the guests that are coming into our community that week to understand that we are true blue, that we are very excited about our community and all the businesses that support us, and so we hope that it'll be a great week for everyone concerned, that Murphy Center will be full that night, full of individuals wearing blue, and we hope we get to see all of you there. So thank you so much for supporting us, and we look forward to seeing you true blue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is the time for public comments, and we do have six people that have requested to speak tonight with us. So we will remind each of you to come forward, tell us what your name is, and give us your address, and we are limiting these comments to three minutes each, please. First is Mr. Tom Brooker. Is Mr. Brooker with us? Okay, we're moving right along, then if he shows up, we'll wait. Mr. Joe Trauber. Mr. Joe Trauber. These were all people interested in the road board, school board discussion, and I don't see either of those two people here yet. Amy Brown. Yes, she is here. Thank you.
My name is Amy Brown. I live at 4715 Well Chance Road in Murfreesboro, just right at the Reedieville line. The reason I'm here tonight is because I've followed the road and school board remapping issue since the beginning with great interest. I was unaware that the zones contain island areas and grouped areas like the urban parts of Laverne with rural areas such as Milton. Now, I've been a country girl, and I've been a city girl, and I can speak from experience that the needs of urban dwellers really vary, are different from the needs of country people. So that's why I'm here tonight. I would like to urge you to vote for the proposed new map for the road and school boards when it comes up for a vote. It's simply the common sense solution. It's logical, it's more compact, and it simply makes more sense. I really hate that some of those who are currently elected might have to run against each other if the map is approved. However, we could all benefit from shaking things up a little. New board members might have some new ideas that have not yet been considered, and as a mother with kids that attend Rutherford County schools, I would absolutely love to see even more progress. I feel like Rutherford County schools are some of the finest schools around, and I would just love to see how much better they can get. So I'd like to urge you again to see the common sense in the proposed maps and vote for them tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
My name is Donald Todd, and I live at 633 Buck Lane. In 2012, how this county could have prevented a huge increase in our total debt surpassing one-half billion dollars. On January 14, 2013, an article in the Daily News Journal stated that $470,000 in property taxes will be refunded to two companies. This property tax loss to the county has resulted in the county expressing concern that, quote, "Whenever the government loses revenue, it means having to look at other ways to offset that, such as raising taxes or cutting services," unquote. In this article, the county did not mention the fact that between $89 million and more than $104 million of surplus revenue consisting of pure cash between 2011 and 2012 has been removed by Rutherford County and invested in CDs, an LGIP savings account, and a money market savings account in several banks. This money originated from nine funds or more. Long-term investments with much of this surplus revenue under the bankers' control make it difficult, if not impossible, to recycle this money to the next fiscal year's budget. With much of the surplus revenue diverted to banks who use it to expand their private loan businesses, the city or county often does not have enough money in reserve in case of a shortfall in a specific fund in next year's budget to eliminate this shortfall. When this happens, as it often does, the city or county has a perfect excuse to raise taxes. The banks profit from this situation, but the taxpayers, along with the local governments, may suffer bankruptcy. Considering the fact that Rutherford County's total debt on June 30, 2012 showed a huge increase over the previous year, reaching a total debt of more than one-half billion dollars, it seems logical to assume that the county's irrational transfer of control of millions of surplus revenue over to the bankers is responsible for moving us closer to that bankruptcy. At last December's meeting of the county commissioners, the finance department made this statement, quote, "We do not make investments," unquote. That is not true. The truth is obvious after you read my handout from the trustee. It is entitled Investments. If we recycle the surplus to next year's budget, this huge balance will easily pay for any future shortfall, thereby preventing a tax increase and reducing the debt. Use the $104 million constitutionally, and we can easily offset the property tax loss." Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Todd. Next, we have Mayor Sam Toon.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. Commissioners, first, on the other side of the table, I'd like to thank y'all for what y'all do to keep our county moving forward, and I can appreciate it, probably more than a lot of people. I've got two issues I'd like to speak briefly on. Mayor Burgess said it, three minutes, so I'll try to get it quicker than that. One of them would be the rezoning, the map. I've looked at it, and I've studied it, and I guess I should back up. I am Sam Toon. I'm the mayor of Eagleville. I've talked to many of our citizens in the area, not just in Eagleville. I've talked to several of the members of the committee that organized and put this map together. Probably, we would all agree that it's not perfect, but I don't know that we can get a perfect rezoning. The people that was on the committee that we asked citizens to come forward and donate their time, contribute their time to put to this, they want to be heard for the work that they've done. So what I would ask you to do is support the proposal that is before you tonight. The second thing is of importance. I tried to put at each one of his desk an invitation to the city of Eagleville on January 30 at 11 o'clock. I may have missed some. You don't need a formal invitation, but I tried to get everybody one there if I missed one. But there will be a public announcement, there will be a news release in the city of Eagleville at Eagleville City Hall on January 30 at 11 o'clock, and we'd like to invite Mayor Burgess, all your commissioners, and general public. Everyone is welcome. We'd like to have everybody there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor Toon. Next, we have Mr. Gabriel Fancher.
I'm Gabriel Fancher, and I wrote my address down so I wouldn't forget this time. It's 2526 Wiltshire Drive. Yeah, that was embarrassing the last time. Let's see here. You guys may already know what a gerrymander is, but just in case, I thought I'd use three of my, a little, a few of my minutes here to give you a history lesson. A gerrymander is a combination of the name Elbridge Gerry and a salamander, and in 1812, Elbridge Gerry crafted a congressional district that looked like a salamander across the map of Massachusetts. And he did that to assure the outcome that he wanted in that particular district, and thus the word gerrymander was born. Now, we have what we got going on here, I think, would be considered more like chicken foot mandering. I believe is the way I've been reading about it. Gerrymandering, of course, gets a bad rep because it's often a Republican or Democrat that holds the pen that draws the district in such a manner that it helps their respective team. But here in Rutherford County, the districts on the current map have clearly been drawn to favor those already elected. And for that reason, and many more that I'm sure you guys have heard from other people, I'd encourage you to support the proposed map because, basically, it's just more logical. And refusing to do so is simply an example of insiders taking care of insiders. The most popular reason I've heard to keep what I call the chicken foot map is so incumbents are not forced to run against each other. Now, the citizens elected you guys to be fair and honest, and they're tired of the status quo, and we can see that in the low voter turnout that we see all the time. And we know that being an incumbent is a political advantage, and that's especially true when candidates are not allowed to run with a party affiliation. And drawing districts to protect incumbency is not right. Gerrymandering is clearly a way of electoral manipulation, and in my humble opinion, it's cheating. Be bold, county commissioners. You were elected to do what is right for all the citizens of this county, not just for your already elected friends. And so I urge you to move this forward as quickly as possible. If you wait, they'll have to redistrict again. In 10 years, it'll, we'll be drawing the map again and having the same discussion. And that's, we're supposed to have that discussion because things do change. But the time is now to make it right, and you guys can do so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is elections and confirmation, and we'll call on Commissioner Gooch, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fellow commissioners, the steering and legislative committee has several items for your discussion this evening. On your desk, you will see a list of notary candidates, and I will move for their approval. Mr. Chairman?
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. All of you in favor of that, please say aye. Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you.
Need to announce a vacancy on the conservation board, also a vacancy on the county historian. And I believe we just need to announce the appointment of the judicial commissioner.
Yes. Okay, then, we're moving right along. There is no unfinished business for tonight, and Ms. Ely is still about five or six minutes before 6:30, so you may have time to finish your agenda. We'll see how you do. So we're going to the Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee since there's no report from the Purchasing Committee.
Item M2A, General Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. Property assessor and reappraisal from property assessor gasoline $10,000 to reappraisal gasoline $10,000. County attorney from unassigned fund balance $76,500 to legal services $76,500. This amendment provides for the balance of charges from fiscal year 2012, also the cost incurred to date for charges outside the legal services agreement, and an estimate of $15,000 for future charges for services beyond the legal services agreement. Refunds restricted for capital projects, increased revenue miscellaneous funds $8,200. Increased restricted for capital projects $8,200. This is a refund from the city of Murfreesboro for the landscape installation bond for Lane Agripark, and this $8,200 will be going back to the development tax. Transfers in restricted for capital projects, increased revenue of transfers ends of $1,698 to an increase to restricted for capital projects $1,698. This is closing the balance of the Stewart's Creek Farm Project, those are road projects, and transferred back to the development tax. Resolve this 17th day of January 2013. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Jordan. Any questions or discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
19 yes, 2 abstain. Motion passes.
Item M2B, a resolution authorizing a contribution agreement with USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service. Whereas at the regular meeting on April 16, 2009, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution authorizing the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, to execute a contribution agreement with the USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service to assist in providing funding of $10,000 for a part-time position for the Rutherford County Soil Conservation District. And whereas at the regular meeting on March 17, 2011, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution authorizing the county mayor to renew the grant. And whereas Rutherford County and the USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service desire to continue the grant with the NRCS providing $9,000, Rutherford County providing $10,000, and the state of Tennessee providing $10,000 for the period of September 1, 2012 through August 31, 2013. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute the contribution agreement number 68-4741-2-059 with the USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as have set forth herein at length verbatim, for the purpose of delivering conservation technical assistance for planning and implementation of conservation programs. Resolve this 17th day of January 2013. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
And a second from Commissioner Serrino. Any questions or discussions on that? Okay. All of you in favor of that, then, just please say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Ely. That was well done, as usual. Okay, I believe that it's approximately 6:30, so we're going to back up and have our public hearing regarding our stormwater ordinance. And do you want to make any preliminary opening remarks, Mr. Corbett? Come on up, please, and tell them what we're doing and why we're doing this, and then we will have the public hearing.
Mayor and commissioners, I will bring forth to you tonight the stormwater management ordinance. This is changes to this ordinance that we passed. In March 2003, the first NOI was signed by Mayor Nancy Allen, and the coverage was issued in 2004. These permits expire after five years. They will continue to expire five years. At those times, the state comes forward, we get a new permit, and then those permits are requirements or changes we need to do. Those changes are mandated by EPA as they come down through the system. So there's 94 MS4s in Tennessee. They all have to do this. The county submitted our notice of coverage for this current one in December 2010 and was approved by our Stormwater Citizen Advisory Committee, signed off by the mayor at that time. In March of 2010, the county was issued a notice of coverage of our permit was up to In March of 2000, the county was issued a notice of coverage of our permit was updated. In that permit, there's a five-year plan. The city of the county, the state says you have to do X number of things, but we're not going to require you to do them all the first year. You can space them out. So, we, this is the second year of this particular phase and these are changes to that ordinance. The document has been updated for a couple of reasons. One is to make the changes to comply with the new regulations. The other is to make it a little more user-friendly as people use it and we use this as we do our inspections on the projects in the counties as pertaining to stormwater management. All the changes were made, were minimum changes as we, there, as example, I'll come forth again next year with some other changes that are already in the permit. We have a, what I've done is, we piloted about three major ones. Most of them are just language. The state mandates, they give to us a, a model. We have to change the language to comply with that model. And this one, the major changes, one, we currently in our, in our permit or before has had a 50-foot buffer when they're doing construction on the edge of bank of a stream. That changes to 60 feet, but it's an average of 60 feet of the length of the process, the project itself. We are going to require a maintenance agreement on all these projects from the developer for perpetuity to maintain the stormwater apparatus. Now, that could be a detention pond or it could be a mechanical apparatus, whatever they put in there, they have to sign this agreement. Most of your developers will then turn that over to the homeowners association associated with, if it's a subdivision. The site plans, the commercials will still be responsible for maintaining those ordinances. In addition to that, these facilities have to be inspected and it's going to require for five years to be inspected by a registered engineer. And we do inspections on these projects as they go through, a monthly inspection. These, the people who are doing the construction are required to inspect it twice weekly. We then inspect what they do, basically, try to make sure we're all complying with these arrangements. So, the, what we're bringing forth to you are the changes for this year for the stormwater ordinance that are mandated by the state to us.
Commissioner Farley.
Mayor, could you tell us what this program, how it's going to benefit any of the constituents that we represent and people in Rutherford County?
Well, the purpose of the stormwater program itself is to clean up our public waters. Many of you do fishing, boating, whatever. In the past, most of our construction projects have put into these waters contaminants. Contaminant can be sediment, it can be fertilizer, it can be oils, it can be pesticides, whatever. So, the ordinance is put together to minimize the damage to our streams as we, as we go through this. In addition to that, we found another side effect. If we follow through on these, we've minimized the flooding problems we've had. You know, we, when I came here about 15 years ago, we had quite a few flooding problems. In three years, we've been able to, to address those. Now, what we're doing here, instead of going back and fixing something we missed, we're trying to address them on the front end so those flooding problems don't appear at a later date.
Okay, any other question from Mr. Corbett before we have the public hearing? Ms. Cook.
Who cleans out these waterways? I know we got some in Laverne and I'm saying the Corps of Engineers is in charge and they say somebody else is in charge and somebody else. So, this comes under the, under this program, right?
The navigable waterways do not come, as far as cleaning them out, do not come under this program.
These are little branches that dry up and trees are grown in them.
Challenges we've had is, in the past, based on USGS maps, they have what's called a blue line stream. And that's where somebody's going some aerial photograph and they've looked at it and they say, water flows through here and they actually draw that with a blue line. Okay. The Corps of Engineers controls the blue line stream. And they would not let us, and I've tried a couple of places to clean out some branches you're talking about, the Corps would not give us permission to go into that blue line stream with any kind of mechanized equipment to do it. Now, they say we can go in by hand and clear all that out, but if you're familiar, we're talking, you know, large trees, boulders and stuff, it would be extremely difficult to handle by hand.
Well, this is part of Laverne that floods. Bridgestone's been flooded twice and there's beaver dams in it. And I seem to can't get anything done. So, seems to me like collecting the money for the stormwater that they do on our bills, we go to this and open these waterways.
In that particular case, Laverne has their own ordinance for, which they do collect a stormwater fee to handle for those types of things. Now, the county does not have a fee process.
I know this is not county, I know it's the city, but as, this is what I get from the city, this is what I get from different ones. And something needs to be done. Years ago, we used to go in and clean our own waterways out on our farm and nothing was said. And now, you can't even take a chainsaw in there and cut those, those bushes and those size your harm.
Well, again, I can tell you, I have had the Corps of Engineer and I've walked a couple of these streams trying to get permission for us to clean some out of the county and I was turned down.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Corbett. You can stand aside here till we see what happens. All right, we're going to open this discussion up regarding the stormwater management ordinance that is being revised. The public hearing is open. If, if there's anyone here that wishes to speak for or against this changes that are being made, please come forward and make your comments. Does anyone wish to speak regarding the stormwater management ordinance modifications? Okay. I don't see anyone that's coming forward to speak, therefore, the public hearing is closed. And do we have a motion concerning the adoption of these changes? Mr. Phillips, do we have a second? Mr. Young. Any discussion? All of you in, excuse me, Mr. Schaefer.
I'd just like to ask Mr. Corbett, what costs there is, if any, to the county in these changes? And what happens if it's a mechanical apparatus that's put in a subdivision and it quits working and the homeowners association does not have the money to repair it?
Well, a couple of things. Currently, our budget runs around $150,000. These changes will require probably an inspector. We were utilizing one of the codes inspectors before on our program. We were splitting it, but because of some, their workload, we've lost that. And so, I've got one engineer who's running the program and doing all my inspections and stuff right now. So, again, our current budget's 150, so that, that's, I don't see any increase except possibly for that one person. I forgot your second question, I'm sorry.
Mechanical value.
Oh, yeah. We've discussed this. What we're going to have to do, if we have a mechanical apparatus in there, and currently we don't have any, but they are used throughout the country and it does not work and we cannot get the homeowners association to repair it, we will probably have to go through codes who have the ability to do this. We can, we can go in and repair it and then send the bill back to the homeowners. Now, the homeowners association, when you get into doing that, the way that you have to do that probably is put a lien against the houses in the homeowners, in home, in the, within the subdivision. But having said that, I mean, we, we're required to do it, so.
Okay, anything else? Are you ready to vote? We have a motion and a second on approving the changes being made to this stormwater ordinance. All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record reflect, it was unanimous. Okay, thank you, Mr. Corbett. There's no report from the Health and Education Committee, or the Property Management Committee, or Public Works, not, excuse me, not Public Works, Public Safety. And we do have one resolution necessary from the Public Works and Planning Committee, Commissioner Phillips.
A resolution to approve 35 mile per hour speed limit on Dale Thomas Road. Whereas the Rutherford County Highway Department is responsible for certain county roads in Rutherford County, Tennessee. And whereas TCA 55-8-153 authorizes the Rutherford County Commission to prescribe speed limits as it may deem appropriate on any road being maintained by Rutherford County and whereas it, it to, and authorizes it to erect appropriate signs. And whereas the Rutherford County Highway Department has recommended and requested a 35 mile per hour speed limit with appropriate signage be posted on Dale Thomas Road, a designated county road. And whereas the Public Works and Planning Committee has recommended said speed limit be imposed for the safety and welfare of the citizens of Rutherford County, Tennessee, and the maintenance and preservation of this county road and persons traveling thereon. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners as follows. That the maximum speed limit be and the same shall hereafter be 35 miles per hour for all motor vehicles traveling on Dale Thomas Road, said speed limit being deemed appropriate and reasonable by the Rutherford County Commission upon recommendation of the Rutherford County Highway Department pursuant to TCA 55-8-153. Resolve this 17th day of January 2013. Mr. Chairman, I say move.
Mr. Sandlin, a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mrs. Phillips. Now, we're, we recognize Commissioner Jeff Phillips regarding a Road Board and School Board Zones Committee presentation on behalf of the Steering Committee. Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The committee, Road Board, School Board Committee got together as a result of the discussion that was had, the much discussion that we had at this commission in December. We met on January the 2nd, I believe it was, and had some follow-up discussion. And also, wanted to make a, a different type of approach than what was talked about in December. And I'm pretty sure that we'll be in a decision-making mode this month. As a result of that, I'll be one of those decision-makers and Ed Phillips, the vice-chair of that committee, is going to make a brief presentation, if that's okay.
Okay, without objection. Mr. Phillips, you may come forward in no relationship to the Commissioner Phillips, I believe, but just, and give the report as you see it from the Road Board and School
All right, thank you, commissioners. I appreciate y'all's time and everything. And I know on behalf of the Study Committee, we appreciate your, the opportunity to be able to come together and to discuss this and, and see what we can come up with. Now, ultimately, in December, we presented to you that we were planning on, or we recommended as a committee for 2016. And based on some of the discussion from that December commission meeting, we decided to meet it once again. And we modified our recommendation to reflect a 2018 implementation date. Some of the objections that were presented by you, by some of you on the commission were that, you know, it's not fair for those who were running, you know, in 2012 and then midstream changed the, the map on them. As a committee, we, we understand that objection, the reason why we pushed it back to 2018 in that case. This allows those who are running in 2014 just about the same amount of time it would have given if this was in a regular, you know, 2010 or 2020 redistricting. Gives them about a year, year and a half to decide whether they want to run again. But this allow those who run in 2014 to have their old district that they are currently representing and then know that in 2018, their district will change. That also affords those who will be running in 2016, especially, you know, the biggest issue was the school board with us putting three members in the same district. This will allow them about four, three and a half years or so to know that, hey, in 2020, your district is going to be different if you decide to run in 2016. We felt that was a, a pretty good compromise. Certainly, we, us meeting was not an attack on anyone who was on that commission, who voted for this original map. It was not an attack on anybody who was with the redistricting committee that originally came up with this, this map. But ultimately, we came to the conclusion that the new map that we designed, albeit not perfect, I mean, you know, as, as Mayor Toon pointed out, we're not going to find a perfect map. It's just not going to happen. It's not going to make everybody happy. But the new map that we are proposing makes a little bit more sense to implement. This allows, like I said, once again, we, we took into the objection, we, we wanted to make sure that we could give them the opportunity for those who do represent those districts to, to have another opportunity and some more time knowing that their district will change. So, that's the conclusion that we came up with in our Study Committee. I'll be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Sure. Phillips, I'm not sure they have any questions. They may call you back after they get into some of this deliberation. But anyway, we appreciate your presentation on behalf of the committee.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question.
You have a question, Mr. Phillips?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any advantage to doing it, implementing it in 2018 versus 2012? I'm sorry, 2020? Because I was watching the meeting and as I was following the conversation, it seemed like implementation in 2018, there was going to be a gap in representation. Does that make sense?
That was one issue that was brought up. It was a question of whether or not it was legal or, or whether there would be a gap in representation. But there will not be a gap in representation. What will happen is if, you know, if everything stays status quo where everybody gets reelected to all their positions as they are now in 2014 and 2016, if it changes by 2018 for those who were elected in 2016, they will still be representing their old districts and then for those positions that are up for election in 2018, will start representing possibly some new, new commission districts, but there will not be any gap in, in representation. And it, and they can live outside their district if they are elected to a, a district that was the way it was before they changed. Just as the same with, you know, in y'all's case.
Anything else for Mr. Phillips? All right, thank you, sir. All right, now, we discussed this, just simply discussed it last time, and we deferred action on this until this meeting. So, we'll have to have a motion to some effect with regard to this tonight. We are to take action on it tonight. Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we adopt the committee's proposal to adopt the new proposed map in the 2018 election cycle.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Allen and Commissioner Turner. Now, discussion. Commissioner Farley.
I know there's some, some folks that got to speak at the public comments and I don't know if, if the road board members, I see two, I don't know if any school board members are here, but I'd like to give them a chance to, you know, give their thoughts and I'd like to suspend the rules to allow anyone from the road board or school board that'd like to speak on this matter.
All right, that's second from Commissioner McAdoo and Commissioner Black. All right, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That's acceptable then? So, we'll give a road board member or a school board member, those that wish to speak may come forward and tell us your name and make your comments.
My name is Keith Fratcher. I'm a road board member. I came and spoke last month. I also served on this redistricting committee. Again, I'm not, I'm not here to, to argue anything, just want to make, just make some points. First of all, I'd like to remind you all that, you know, earlier in the year, you all passed a private act that was brought before you all that aligned the road board and the school board up together so that they would be running together. When, when you all passed that, it affected road board members, affected two. One, it was that ran this year that will go to 2018. And then another one that will run in 2014 will go to 2020. That was one thing that I had brought up during this committee was, even doing the 2016 or doing the 2018, in my opinion, was going to affect it. Because if you go to 2020, that has those road board and school board folks lining back up. folks lined back up from that process on, from that forward, everybody's back to a four-year term, so that's no longer an issue. The other thing I would like to say is, on this Committee, like Commissioner Phillips said from the get-go, everybody tried to have open mind. I did that. I I'm not necessarily saying this is not a good map. But I will say, I'm not sure if it's the right time to do it. Also, you know, this Committee was a, when this Committee, there was a, the Committee was formed earlier in the year, was comprised of County Commissioners, people from citizens of the county, that I think there was even a couple of members from the Election Commission was on there. And they viewed the the, you know, the redistricting based upon the census. At that time, there were no Road Board members and there were no School Board members on that Committee. There again, I'm not saying you all did that purposely or any other thing. I know I attended those meetings because I knew whatever that Committee did was going to affect the the Road Board I serve on. It was going to affect the School Board. I came there and Commissioner Sandlin, he chaired that, and I was allowed to make some comments. Anybody was that from the Road Board or School Board that wanted to come there. I did that and had my concerns. I think the map that you all see, the ones being proposed, I think that Committee seen that map, the Committee, not this Commission. They didn't move forward with it. They elected to stay with the current map that they have, other than changing what they had to change as far as in a few districts, whether it be a straight or whatever, to get to their census. But they did not forward that map on for you all to see. So I did want to point that out. There again, I don't know what their reason was. I mean, I'm looking at is maybe it was not the time. You know, my my thing is here tonight, I don't think I don't think anybody on the Road Board or the School Board, you know, some comments have been made, and I'm not here to argue, but of protecting, you know, we're trying to protect, well, I don't, you know, necessarily protect or are you all trying to protect your friends or buddies or whoever is on the Road Board or School Board. I just feel like that, really, until this time, when this Committee was formed, from the Road Board and School Board perspective, they never had any input. And when I say that is from when you all first started looking at the census. I know last month I had spoke, and my suggestion would be to not not to, I'm against this map at this time or doing anything different. What I think needs to happen is I would suggest that if if you if it's going to affect anything, I think, up until two thousand and twenty, the new census in two thousand and twenty-two. My suggestion would be to, in the future, when you get ready to do your form your new Committee, to look at census and changing the districts, that you make sure that you definitely going to have some Commissioners on there. Make sure that you have Election Commission, Election Commission members like you had before, and to make sure you have some Road Board, more than one Road Board member, more than one School Board member on there. Because whatever you do, it's going to affect those folks that are elected in this county just like you are. And I think if you have that Committee at that time apprised of those folks, you may come back to this map. I mean, I I'm not saying, you know, I'm not saying that it's not a good map. I just think that if you implement this thing now, we've already talked about how it's going to affect, you know, they can still stay in their district, but even though the representation, it's just a, it's just going to cause a lot of confusion, in my opinion, to do something in midstream. I mean, like I say, when when the Commission passed this right here, I mean, and I'm not saying anybody did here, but you all as Commissioners, twenty-one Commissioners, it's not going to affect you at all until two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-two. But if you change this, this is kind of midstream for Road Board and School Board members. And yes, it's going to put some of them in the same one, School Board and Road Board member. And I just, in my opinion, I just don't think that's fair. So I think, and my suggestion, and I'll hush, is to not approve this, wait till this comes back before you all, and you have to do something in two thousand and twenty-two. And when you do it, make sure you have some Road Board members on there, some School Board members, Election Commissioners, County Commissioners, and some folks from the citizens. And then, you know, they'll have the the citizens, if they have some questions or opinions or suggestions, then, you know, they open that thing up to a public hearing part of it, and they'll have their opportunity to do it then. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there other School Board members or more Road Board members that wish to speak? If so, come forward and give us your name and make your comments.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Appreciate you letting me be able to speak tonight. I just got a brief comment. This has been going on for a while and.
What's your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was getting ready to, I'm sorry. I'm Randall Jones. I represent Zone Three, and that's District Four, Six, and Seven. This is my fourth term. And the only thing I've been saying all along is that it's, this is so confusing, everything's this way, the the number's this way. I'm not sure this is really right, the way it's set up. The only thing I want the public to know is, is there's three bodies of government in the county that are voted four-year terms. That is the Road Board, the School Board, and the County Commission. And the only thing I want out of this is to be treated just like the Commission treated theirselves when all this was redone. That's the only thing I'm asking and everything, because we're all servants of the county. And I think to treat two other bodies of elected officials is wrong. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Holiday. I live at twenty thirty-four Abington Drive in Laverne, Tennessee. It's my honor to serve as the School Board Representative for Zone One that is made up of Ms. Carol Cook's district, Ms. Rhonda Allen, and Mr. Robert Stevens. I served on the Special Committee for this question and could not find myself to support the proposal that has come back to the Commission. I believe the map is correct. I believe the map serves a purpose and improves representation. I believe the implementation recommendation was flawed. There is an opportunity to take a step forward in this matter and put in place a map that would be considered when the two thousand and twenty census came to bear. We discussed, or you discussed, I witnessed, in the last County Commission meeting, that the map had not been changed since nineteen seventy-two or in that range. Apparently, changing the map is a challenge. It would not be a empty effort to put in place a map that would start the conversation in two thousand and twenty and make a better representation for Road Board and School Board. But it would require that we separate the two decisions of map design versus implementation. What this would allow is for areas of interest like Kitterell to be adjusted. The Special Committee was not allowed to even consider movement of County Commission lines. These are things that can be done in two thousand and twenty, and I simply raise that to your attention. At its present presentation, it is not something that I could support in Committee or here tonight.
All right, thank you, Mr. Holiday. Are there other Road Board or School Board members that wish to speak? We see one more School Board member that wishes to speak.
Hello, I'm Helen Blakenhip. I live at fifty-seven forty-eight Halls Hill Pike, representing Zone Three. As Mr. Jones had said, Mr. Jones said, I represent Commissioner Districts Four, Six, and Seven. I don't know how many of you guys sat out there and had to run a race against four other people. I did. I was four, I was one of four in my race. Yes, I was on the northern end of my zone, but it's still my zone. It's still part of what was been there, yes, since nineteen seventy-two, but the map has flown. I didn't find out till just the Friday before early voting started, where actually my zone lines started or ended compared to other County Commissioner districts. I understood that. We had to, I had to go and fight the race of being out in the county, going and just hoping I was putting a sign at the correct place. Maybe if you had to go against four, three other people, you would have had the same problem I did. One other person is okay, you have a rough idea. But on our end of it, it was not there. This happened not at a good time. If you want to do a map, it should have been presented to whoever was running before they were ran. Let's get real. I applied in January of last year. I qualified by February. I should have had the map already in my hand long before then. I'm going to be honest, I'm a school teacher by trade, and if we don't prepare our students for what's the upcoming event, we're not going to get there. We can't expect them to do well on the test. This does not make sense. You need to think about this. If you want the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty implementation, that is okay. However, whatever you decide, make sure that you put it out there for everybody to have long before the election. I saw, the first time I saw this map was after I was elected. Guys, that's not fair. Not fair for anybody, for any representation, for anybody at all. Yes, I'm upset because it also affects my little, my school, my community I grew up It does affect them, and I know that. But we also have to think of the bigger picture, and sometimes that's what we have to do. And I'm willing to think of the bigger picture. But you need to think of how this affects everybody else. Make sure you treat everybody fairly in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think through any other School Board or Road Board members here, so everyone has had their opportunity to speak. We have a motion properly seconded to approve the map effective two thousand and eighteen. Is there other discussion or deliberation? Commissioner Phillips, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was a lot of discussion last month, and and this month, we are in a decision-making mode. I I I think there was some suggestion made that from some of the public comments, that maybe the first redistricting committee maybe didn't fully complete their assignment, and I disagree with that. The Committee that was put together disagrees with that. I think the Committee actually, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Sandlin, but the Committee did actually look at this proposed map, but it did not meet one of the criteria that was number one on their list when they were looking at incumbency. So it really was something that they couldn't consider. The way I understood, the Committee that was put together, the one that's made this proposal, was not faced with that same obstacle. Of course, incumbency was also listed, but it was not to be used as the deciding factor. And that's what this Committee did. I think that that proposal is is a good one. I have a concern with two thousand and eighteen implementation. It is somewhat confusing because it would actually put some School Board members, some Road Board members, out of zone for a couple of years and make it a lot more confusing for the public. And I think that's the original, the reason that the original two thousand and sixteen was made. The two thousand and twenty proposal would also do the same thing. I'd like to amend the motion to make the implementation date two thousand and twenty instead of two thousand and eighteen.
Second, Commissioner Schaefer. All right, continued discussion on that, the amendment. Is there any discussion on the amendment? There appears to be no discussion on the amendment. The motion before you is to adopt this map effective two thousand and twenty. Is that, is that your understanding? Commissioner Young?
Well, I was looking at this and breaking down the population of the county and the municipalities. The main argument for this was Laverne wasn't happy and Eagleville wasn't happy because they didn't feel like they had their one representative, correct me if I'm wrong. Well, I'm looking at this map, and y'all just waylaid Murfreesboro. I mean, we're only going to have one representative now, and we got more population than anybody. So this map is flawed. Think about that. Nobody's even brought that up. Murfreesboro, who were the majority of the county school kids go, one hundred and ten thousand, there's eighty-something thousand in the county, thirty-nine in Laverne and thirty-two and, or excuse me, thirty-nine in Smyrna and thirty-two in Laverne or something. So basically, to help everybody else out, we're going to degrade Murfreesboro's School Board representation. Because the way I look at this new map, we could have one representative living inside the city, and everybody else could live outside. So you Commissioners that live inside Murfreesboro, think about this map. We need to look at it all in two thousand and twenty-two. I mean, nobody's even brought that up. So the majority of the population's getting hurt by this, not helped. So just think about that. And I'm going to vote no on it all, so.
The other discussion we have before us, the amendment. Commissioner Schaefer, then Commissioner McAdoo.
All we're going to be voting on is the amendment to change the, changes the year of implementation, should the original motion carry. Is that correct?
Amendment first.
Yeah, it's just the amendment on the years is all we're voting for.
That's right. The map is the same in both the original motion and the amendment. Any other discussion? Commissioner McAdoo, yes, sir.
On the amendment, so we're saying in twenty, this will be implemented in two thousand and twenty. And as I recall, we do a re, do a census every ten years. So even if we implement this, two thousand and twenty, would we be looking at going into a new census or?
Won't have the new census date until two thousand and twenty-one, so, and we won't adopt your new Commission districts and new zones for this until two thousand and twenty-two. So you'd be, you'd have this in effect for two years before you changed it again.
That's what I'm looking at, that short timeframe before we be redoing it again anyway, so.
Commissioner Allen.
The only thing I want to say about the timeframe is this. Well, first of all, we've, we've been having to look at this and examine this for months now, because the redistricting, when you're looking at Commission districts, is such a weighty issue. This is a weighty issue. We've, we had to split them up. So if we don't go ahead and project out a timeline date of two thousand and eighteen or two thousand and twenty, my fear is that weighty issue of looking at the redistricting is going to be what gets paid attention to again, and that's going to move on, and we're just not going to pay attention to this. It's, we're going to keep saying, just the same problem that the redistricting Committee had last time when we discovered that we had an island situation going on, the timeline was too short. And we sat in this room, and we all agreed, there was no rush. We can take our time. We can look at this, we can study it, and then we can make a thoughtful decision. Well, guess what? That's what we've been doing. We've been looking at it, we've been talking about it, and now it's time to make a thoughtful decision. You know, the objection that Ms. Blakenhip had was perfectly valid, that there was no lead time on this. Well, you can't get a better lead time than seven years, you know? And that's going to allow the folks that just won to run for two full terms. So, you know, that is taking into consideration the incumbents that are still here, so we're not throwing the baby out with the bathwater. I think this is, it's time for this map, it's time for a change. You know, if you at least hand this foundation of a map to the redistricting Committee that's going to be faced with this in two thousand and twenty-one or two thousand and twenty-two, they're going to have some place to start from that sort of cleans it up. And and I don't think that anybody is going to object to starting with a better foundation. I'm sure that that redistricting Committee that I served on, we wish we would have had something to look at that could have led us into the future. Because as we all saw, there are major changes that keep happening as our growth continues, and the redistricting Committees, the redistricting districts have to continue to change. So I urge you all to take this into serious consideration. I also would just like to make one final point, and that is, every citizen- I also would just like to make one final point, and that is, every citizen that you've heard of, heard from, whether it be from this committee that was just appointed or the ones that took time to come up here and speak tonight, the citizens have asked you to do this. The only people that you've heard objections from have been elected officials, and I think you need to think about that.
Any other discussion or questions? Are we ready to vote on the amendment? Which is, with the map that's before you, it would be implemented in 2020. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
12 yes, 9 no, amendment passes.
Now I'm advised that we are ready to vote on the original motion, which does do the map. All right, so you've, as of 2020. Mr. Sandlin?
Mr. Chairman, county commissioners, I had the great privilege of being the chairman of the first redistricting committee, and what an honor it was. We had quite a few tasks to, to do, and Commissioner Jeff Phillips was right. We, you know, we, by law, the county commission districts, we have to look at incumbency. And quite a few commissioners were on here, and I'll miss somebody. Commissioner Schaefer, was you on that committee? I was thinking so, and, and Mr. Joe Frank Jernigan, Commissioner Phillips, myself, Commissioner Allen, Commissioner McAdoo, Commissioner Jeff Jordan, did I miss anybody? But anyway, this brought this in front of the committee at this point in time, saying we've got to look at something here. We've got school board, road board, and county commission, how are we going to do this? Are we going to split them up? We can, but are we going to deal with incumbency across the board? And we thought about it, we talked about it, and we discussed it, and we all voted unanimously, unanimously, to treat everybody fairly and equally and across the board the same. So we had a public speaker, who I think a lot of, that, Mr. Fincher, we brought that up, and we talked about that, and we decided to treat us all the same. So we're not treating anybody any differently on the road board or school board or ourselves. So, and I hate that about politicians, because we get slammed pretty hard, but I just wanted to make that a point. And some of us politicians, well, shouldn't be politicians. But I did want to make that point, and 2022, there is going to be another committee set, no matter whether we like it or not or what we do tonight. They're going to have to deal with this same issue. I feel very comfortable in what we approved and our committee came out of the first time. You're absolutely right. Mr. Phillips, it's not going to be a perfect map, no matter who does it in this room or not. It's not going to be a perfect map. There's stuff I don't like in my district, and I had to deal with it, and everybody else does too. I used to go all the way to 96, and now I'm cut back all the way to, I think I have one little sliver of Blackman, true Blackman, you know, in my district now. But that's who I represent, and I understand growth, and that's what you have to do. You have to, the, my famous word is tweak. It had to be tweaked, and we'll have to tweak it again in 10 years. I'm going to ask you commissioners to vote no on this map. And the reason why, the main reason why is to treat everybody equally and fairly across the board. Plain and simple as that. It's not who come up with the map, or how the map was done, or what the committee said or what the committee didn't say. It's treating everybody equally and fairly, and we have to do that as elected officials, whether you're on the road board, school board, or county commission, period. Thank you all very much. And I did want to say thank you to that other committee that was put together. Y'all worked very hard, and I don't want to downplay that any. Y'all did work very hard. It was a tough thing that y'all dealt with, and I commend you for that. So I appreciate you all.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Schaefer?
Well, I agree with a lot of things that the commissioner just said. And I think in nonpartisan races, that incumbency, you know, it should be looked at some. And the reason is, in nonpartisan races, you don't have people giving you money. You're out there spending your own, out of your own pocket. I agree with the people that ran in 2012, and then things were changing, and this. And I think, though, the way this proposal is, it's before us now in 2020, everybody's going to have a shot at being elected twice at least. Some twice more in 2014, 2018. Others will be, have, were just elected in 2012, and will be able to in 2016. But I mentioned it before, I believe it was 1763 was the Stamp Act, something like that. Yeah, I know, I know, that was about the time I was born. But, but anyhow, the big thing in this country, and it led to our revolution, was taxation without representation. And I'm going to say it again, I'll guarantee you that my three children had more classes in this county in portables than anybody else in this room's children did, unless they got 12 of them. But they lived in it in Laverne, right after they started, the oldest one started back, heaven forbid, back in the 70s. And the other two went through Laverne primary and Roy Walden, who were portables all over the place down there. But that's what they got. And Laverne had no representation as such. Was a person in, from the county, the closest one to, that had, had part of Laverne, was from Smyrna, and it took forever before finally new high schools got built. And then it was still, 1994, 2004, before a middle school opened up in Laverne. I don't think that's right for the kid to be going through. I don't think it's right for portables for anybody, but we're going to have them with the way this county's grown. And so, I got to mention something. Maybe this will bring back some memory for y'all. That this nation was created under God, and that the government of this nation should be of the people, by the people, and for the people. And that's why I think this ought to be implemented in 2020. It's going to be tweaked again in 2022 with the new districting, but at least we'll be where we should be.
McAdoo, Mr. Stevens, Mr. McAdoo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I served on the redistricting committee, and we approved the plan, brought it back here to the full commission, and it wasn't a month past that the state redone my district. And I was called in by Mr. Mike up there, and over 800 to 1,000 of my constituents from 1978 was moved to another district by the state. Am I right? And the reason I bring that point up, no matter what we do on this, the way I look at it, population is going to change. Now, if we want to look at something as some commissioners say is fair, and I discussed this in the mayor's office before I even served on the redistricting committee, why don't we increase the school board? Why don't we give each municipality one school board member? If we do that, no matter what way the population sway in Rutherford County, each municipality would have a school board representative. Now, we would be increasing it from a seven to 11. That's not going to break this county. And with the way our schools are increasing, the students are increasing, they probably do need the help over there, from what I'm seeing. Now, as far as the road board, it's fine to me the way it is. Time is going to take care of that. The ones that live in Murfreesboro should realize that Murfreesboro don't take an inch. It takes miles. It'll next, next week, miles if it could. So look out Eagleville. And the reason I bring that up is the city municipalities annex, county roads decrease. And by 10 years down the road, who knows how many county roads we're going to have anyway? But if we want to be fair about it, Smyrna, Laverne, Eagleville, Murfreesboro, we could look at that plan, and we wouldn't have to have these conversations in the, in the future. So that's my thought. And I've given it a lot of thought looking at it, since I got friends on the northern end of the county, graduated on the northern end of the county, but I live in Murfreesboro. So I want to be, try to be as fair as possible throughout all Rutherford County. So if we look at that, we can keep our school boards on the same, add four, and we'll be set for the future. Thank you.
Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That is a very interesting idea that Commissioner McAdoo just proposed. However, I think if we add voting members to a school board from the municipalities, that'll violate the one man, one vote principle, because Eagleville would have more influence than all the other municipalities would, and I don't think that that would pass the constitutional standard. But I do agree that adjusting the number that are serving on those boards might be something that we could look at, and that would, of course, affect the commission districts too, since they're based, since the districts for the road and school board members are based off the county commission districts. The question that I want to present to you tonight is, if you are drawing school board and road board zones without considering the personalities involved, would you create the map on the left, or would you create the one on the right? I've asked a lot of people which one looks more logical, and I have not had the first person tell me that the one on the left is more logical. In fact, when they look at it, they wonder why is there a district with two islands? And I say, I don't know. That's just how it got accidentally passed. But island districts are not good policy. Imagine if we start with that map on the left during the next redistricting process, do you think the incumbents in office then are going to just say, yeah, change my district, we're fine with that? They're going to fight too, just like the commissioners would fight if their districts were being changed. The proposal will give everybody the opportunity to run a couple of times in the current districts. We'll start with a logical foundation, like Commissioner Allen said, when we look at doing the redistricting process the next time. Everybody knows going in that the districts will be changed, there's not going to be any surprises, nobody's going to be stunned to figure out that their district's been changed, because they're already going to be aware of that. And the map on the right is the best product that we can give our constituents. When I'm teaching the class at church for my high school group, one of my standards is always that we want only the best, the highest standards. And that's the standard that I try to follow when I do my work for my business, when I do work here. Are we giving our constituents the best representation possible? Are we giving them the best product possible? I just don't think the map on the left is the best product. It violates four of the five standards that were outlined for the redistricting process. The map on the right is much more compliant with those standards. I don't see how anybody could argue with that. Are we more concerned about the representative of the people? Or are we going to be more concerned about the people who are being represented? Commissioner Allen correctly noted that every citizen that's been involved with this process has suggested that our map needs to be modified. I agree. I think it's much better planning for the long term. I think that the compromise that's been voted on tonight will be a good plan, and I think that all of our constituents would benefit from having that. And one more thing, I've heard several people on meetings and, and discussions say that this ultimately is a political decision, and I would disagree. This is a moral decision. This is what's right and what's not right. We know that map on the right side that was crafted by that committee is much better. Everybody knows that. And so I'm asking you tonight to do the right thing, and let's vote on this compromise and make the changes so that when we do the redistricting next time, we'll get a much more logical outcome, and we won't have to worry about fighting over this in 10 years. Let's get it right now and do the right thing. Thank you.
Mr. Jordan?
I'm just wondering where all this morality and right thing was six months ago, or however many months ago, when we did the commission districts. I said this last month, I'll say it again, this is the most self-serving thing I've seen us do in a long time. We approved our own maps, made ourselves our own districts, which are gerrymandered. You want to see a gerrymandered bunch of districts? Look at the commission districts. They were gerrymandered around to keep all the incumbents in their districts, and nobody had a problem with that. And we got our own districts approved and locked down for 10 years, and then the next month or two, we're like, we've got to fix these and make these look nice and pretty and square and all. That's just wrong. You know, that's just wrong. We, we're, in my opinion, we ought to do whatever it takes to not have to include incumbency the next time around if that includes changing our private act or getting something passed to the legislature. And in 2022, make them all nice and square and pie-shaped or whatever, and, and if I end up in Jack's district or in Robert's district or something, then so be it. But just do it for everybody, across the board, not just the road board and the school board. Do it for all of us. We took care of our own districts, and now we're trying to throw them under the bus, and that's just wrong. I voted for the 20 years, because I'd rather have it in 2020 instead of 2018, but I'm going to vote against this proposal right now, and I urge the rest of you to do the same.
Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Mayor Burgess, and thank you again, committee, for the work that you did on this, both Commissioner Phillips and Commissioner Sandlin, everyone else that was involved. I've got a little bit different take, with all due respect to Commissioner Jordan. I'm actually, I like the map, and I wouldn't be asking, you know, I know Mr. Nipper, and I know Mr. Holliday, and I know Mr. Bratcher. Unfortunately, I don't know Ms. Blankenship or, or Rabbit, as it says on here, or Randall, I'm sorry, I thought I said Rabbit, Mr. Jones. But there was a map and a proposal that I, this commissioner voted for, that would have put me in a district with another commissioner, and I still voted for it, because I thought it was the right thing to do at the same time. So I think that I could vote for this with a clear conscience, in that I'm not asking any of these individuals that would be affected by this to do something that I wasn't willing to do myself. And I think that there was other commissioners, I, I don't remember the exact number of the vote at the time, but when the map was proposed, there was other commissioners that were going to be affected by having to run against an incumbent that's already serving here, and we voted for it anyway, because it was the right thing to do. And so I am going to support this. I do like the 2020 number, and I just wanted to make that public, that Mr. Fancher had mentioned it, and several other people had mentioned that this certainly on, on the surface appears to be very self-serving, but there was an opportunity that I had to vote, to put myself against someone else in the next election on this commission. I voted to do it because I thought it was the right thing to do for Rutherford County by shrinking this commission to 14. And I, and I don't remember how long ago that was, but I wanted to make sure that, that I at least spoke on my conscience, that I'm not asking any of them to do something that I wasn't prepared to do myself as a commissioner. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. McAdoo, let me speak to, Mr. Dernigan speak first, and then you can come back.
Agreed. Just about everything Mr. Jordan said here, and I ask you to vote no on this here.
Mr. McAdoo?
Just one quick point. Number one, I would like to ask county attorney, if we so decide to increase the school board members, could we rightfully do that here and pass it on to the state as a private act?
You could. You're going to have to have that legislation drafted to do it. You can't do it tonight, because you don't have the act. So.
What I'm saying, we got 10 years, the way I'm, I'm hearing it now, you know.
Sure. As long as you don't, as long as you wait till you've got it in writing where the legislature can know what they're going to be considering.
Reason I bring that up is because, like I said, I did discuss it in the mayor's office before serving on that redistricting committee, and, and I heard one commissioner say over there that he was going to be put in with one. I think I was going to be put in with Commissioner Jordan over there. I didn't object, but Commissioner Jordan stated that, I'm pretty sure Commissioner McAdoo wouldn't mind running against me. And the reason I bring that up, I also brought up about if it's all possible, if we could increase the school board district, because they got a lot of work over there. If we want to do something fair, we can go ahead and work on that plan now, instead of tying ourselves down to a proposed map. And there's nothing saying that we got to do this proposed map tonight. If we can come back increasing the school board members, I think that would be a fix to that situation. And, you know, while you're looking at that, you may want to look at decreasing the commissioner, commission from 21 to something. But what I'm saying is, just like Commissioner Young brought up, if I'm living on the- if I'm living on the northern end of the county, oh yeah, this is real great. But if I'm staying in Murfreesboro, I'm getting a slap in the face. And, you know, I can't go along with that, being a commissioner from Murfreesboro, not taking that slap in the face and then got to represent that district. So therefore, I am going to vote no on this. And we got plenty of time to work on other things, so increasing, decreasing, or whatever. And we probably will never get a perfect 100% map that everyone in the county will agree to. But these are some of the things that I think that need to be implemented. And while we got the time to do it, I think we should do it. Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions before we vote? Commissioner Phillips, I think I've given everybody that wants to speak at least two opportunities, so this will be about the last go-round.
Thank you. Just one more thing. After last month, we sat down with the county attorney's office and asked a few questions related to some legalities, and got the answer to all of those. And I just kind of wanted to bring one of those up. But before I do, I just want to kind of reiterate what Commissioner Allen said, is that, sure, we can wait till next redistricting, but if the same rules are in place, we're going to have the same exact problem. That's the reason that I would favor implementing a new map in 2020, because it would get the redistricting committee something to work with, because if the same rules are in effect, in effect, they're going to have the exact same problem with the map as it exists. And that's the reason, the only reason, that I think probably the 2020 date would have merit, is once again, the new map would be in place when the next redistricting committee, and they wouldn't have to worry about incumbency or any of those types of issues at that point in time. So I do think it has merit, but also what Commissioner Jordan says has merit. I think it's going to be a really tough decision, and if you guys think that I'm wavering, I have been wavering for the last month or so. And I wasn't going to vote for 2018, but I am going to vote for 2020. I think it makes sense, as we get into the next census, to have something in place that the new redistricting committee can work with, because as you guys know, a lot of things can happen over the next eight years or so. One other thing is that if this passed tonight and went before the state legislature, and they redid our private act, and it came back before this commission, it would have to pass this commission with a two-thirds or three-quarter majority. Which one is it, Jim? A two-thirds majority. And I'm just wondering if another amendment is appropriate to, and I think we've kind of dubbed that as a supermajority. I wonder if it would be appropriate that this vote be taken on a supermajority basis before we send it to the state legislature. If it passes tonight by one or two vote margin, and we go ahead and send it to the state, the state does the work on it, it comes back here, and then it doesn't pass by a two-thirds majority, we've wasted the state's time. So I'm just wondering if you guys would think that an amendment would be in order, that this would pass on a two-thirds supermajority, so that we wouldn't waste any additional time or effort on that? Is that appropriate?
Wait a minute now. What, did you make a motion to amend?
I'm just wondering if that's appropriate for us to do. I'm not sure that it is, that we can do that legally, Jim.
I believe the statutes provide that votes of this nature only require a majority vote. And some may say, well, in the past, we've said we want to send a two-thirds vote to make sure that it gets adopted if it goes to Nashville. But that's more of a pragmatic sort of request that the legislators historically have made. I haven't heard the present group, but historically, some of the legislators said, if you don't send it down here with a two-thirds vote, we're not going to work on it. But that's their decision. That's not your decision. And I think it only requires a majority vote to pass this body, and then what the state legislature does with it would be up to them. If they choose not to act on it, or because it didn't have two-thirds, that would be their decision, not yours. So I think it would only be appropriate to vote on this on a majority basis, because that's what the statute says these passed by, and that you can't superimpose, for purposes of this body, an automatic requirement, that it be something more than a simple majority.
So it would be inappropriate.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Now, does anybody want to, Ms. Cook hasn't spoken, so we're going to have to let her speak. The others of you, you've already had your two opportunities. I'm going to.
I'm one of the older ones up here, so a little history lesson. It was Senator Andy Wyman. It told us when we sent something to the legislature, he would prefer it would be two-thirds vote.
That's their preference, I'm sure. Commissioner P.
I'm against changing this map at this time. I'm not even really going to go into the reasons about it. But one thing I do want to mention is, I'm the representative from the fourth district here in Rutherford County. But every school that you mentioned that you didn't have in Laverne and Smyrna, I voted to put those in, even though that there's people in Laverne and Smyrna commissioners that voted against schools in my district. Okay? I think you've got to look at the individual peoples that are representing you. And that's why, part of why I'm against is, the people that we have got, incumbents that are up here, were elected by the people in this county, regardless of the ones that got up here and spoke tonight, and thinks that we ought to throw them all out, because they're incumbents. The people that do the electing decide who sits in these seats, and who sits in those road board seats, and who sits in those school board seats. And that's why I'm saying, let's vote no on this, put it to bed, and I'm tired of playing with it.
Right. Any other discussion? Mr. Farley hasn't been speaking to this, I don't think. Go ahead, sir.
My question would be to Mr. Cope. Last month, you were talking about that the private act had to go the two-thirds. Is it law that, so you said a while ago that it doesn't have to have the two-thirds?
It has to have two-thirds when it comes back. When the legislature, if they adopt an act, a private act, then by law, by state law, it's mandated that it be a two-thirds vote. But there's nothing that requires to send it down there, that you ask them to pass it, and you have to have two-thirds to send it to them. That's not a requirement. That's a historical practice sometimes, but it is not a mandated action.
And I agree with you, and because of the state law. I just wanted to be clear that there is a two-thirds vote that has to be done for this to actually happen.
To change the school board, to change the school board, it has to be by a two-thirds vote.
All for the question, was that Mr. Black? Do we have a second? Mr. Schaefer. Okay, all of you in favor of calling for the question, please say aye. Are there any opposed? I think that passed. So we're ready to vote. And what we're voting on is the adoption of this map that's been proposed. And we've already approved that if this map is adopted, it will become effective in 2020. All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
None yes, 12 no. Sales.
Right. Is there any other business that needs to come before this body tonight? I'd like to recognize one person here that's in our audience today, so, Mr. Davidson, if you would come up here and just, so you'll be on record as being here. Come on up here, so they can get you on TV too. All of you have received your email announcing the appointment and selection of Mr. Davidson as a deputy to the mayor effective April the 29th. And just wanted all of you, he's already met a few of you, but welcome aboard. And he's going to be attending a lot of our meetings and just learning, and getting a good dose of orientation and exposure, so just want to say welcome and thank you very much. Anyone else have anything they want to announce? And Mr. P., you've been negligent. I didn't hear you announce the Kitterell ham breakfast is, that's, that's tomorrow, this Saturday. Kitterell ham breakfast. Does any other body have anything in their communities? Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to remind everybody that those ethics financial disclosures are due by January 31st, the annual updates that you turn into the state. And just wanted to remind everybody to get those turned in timely.
Okay. Ethics disclosures turned in, I want them before January the 31st, and you can do that online. If you have done that previously, it'll be easy. Anything else? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.